Ten grand. Every single time.
Are you recording, Shell?
I am now recording.
Ooh, hold on, hold on.
Are you recording now?
No.
All right, we're gonna be on Facebook in five seconds.
Four.
Three.
One. Go.
Hello, Facebook.
All right. It is six o'clock. So at this time, I would like to call the Swamaco Village Board Meeting for Monday, November fourteenth to order. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to approve the agenda by trustee Schneider, seconded by trustee Ward. At this time, if we could, I'd like to have us rise.
You know, vote on that?
We got a vote on it.
Oh, sorry.
On favor.
It's been a while. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero now, let's rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Little out of practice. All right, moving on, item number four, public appearances, any resident wishing to speak regarding any agenda item or to address the board for any matter not on the agenda should come forward at this time. With no one in attendance and seeing no one come forward, we will move to item five. Item number five, public hearings in action. Item A, 2023 budget hearing. When a resolution two-two-zero-two-five, a resolution adopting the 2023 general fund, special revenue funds, debt service fund, capital projects funds, including TIDS one, two, and four, garbage recycling fund, stormwater fund, and accompanying levies and incorporating the accompanying 2024, 2027 proposed budgets as a guide for future planning purposes subject to change by future boards. Administrator Caker.
I'm gonna pass this over to Director LeJoyce for a short presentation.
Thank you. This presentation reflects the levy mounted mill rate set at the October budget workshop and is published in the hearing notice. We received the final assessment values in October twenty-four, three days after we were required to publish the notice. And we also received other updated information and requested changes that were highlighted in the budget memo, and those will be summarized at the end of the presentation as well. But you do have that bulleted memo for reference. So I'll start with the overall tax summary. The proposed levy is a three-point-four-one percent increase over the current year levy with an increase of approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars. The mill rate is expected to increase nine-point-three cents per thousand of value to three-point-eight-seven-five. The village tax impact on a median value home and a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home are twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents respectively. Where do our village tax dollars go? Well, approximately fifty-nine percent of our levy goes to operations, twenty-three percent to debt service, and eighteen percent goes to capital projects, including roads. In the first slide, I mentioned adding one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand to levy. The increase is primarily for the additional one-hundred-thousand for roads. There's also an additional thirty-five thousand for year two of the three-year police services contract, and that does include the increase for body and dash cameras. The rest is primarily an increase in levy contributions to the equipment replacement reserve fund. There are a number of other larger initiatives that are noted here, but not all of these increase the levy. So the East Deerfield Sewer Extension Project, for example, is entirely funded by TID one. The County Highway M Expansion Project is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, TID four, and eventually a capital levy that would reduce borrowing for the project in 2025. The Public Works Bucket Truck Replacements funded by Equipment Replacement Reserve. The Calavera Park Phase One Project is funded by a combination of stadium tax dollars, grants, and donations. And we are utilizing our building maintenance sinking fund to support the building access control upgrades. We continue to reduce our levy-supported debt service, and that's reflected in the next slide. And this budget also includes a six percent staff wage adjustment. The board previously expressed a desire to reduce the percent of levy going to debt service, and the board has certainly been successful there. In 2014, thirty-nine percent of the levy went to debt service. By 2027, seventeen percent is expected to be allocated to debt service. You'll see two dips in the chart. One is for the three-hundred-thousand levy to reduce borrowing for the new fire station, and one is for the levy of six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand to reduce borrowing for County Highway M in 2025.
On this, so can you do another graph? Eventually, when you have time, do that same graph that you did two slides before. If you could do that same graph ten years ago, showing the numbers from ten years ago, that'd be interesting to to see the difference on the overall spend.
Like where they were projecting it to be?
No, 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 ten years ago. So ten years ago, so you have your current one that you just showed us.
Right, 2014.
2014, one that shows how much was operational, how much was to debt service, and how much was whatever the other one was, I can't remember what it is. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Just as time allows, nothing urgent.
For just 2014?
Right, so where we've gone, where we've come.
Okay.
You know, and I think it'd be interesting to see that graph change. It's a good visual, if you want to do it on Facebook at some point, too.
Oh, I got one too far. All right. Here you can see the increase in levy for roads, equipment replacement reserve, and the police services contract that was mentioned earlier. You can also see the significant reduction in debt service levy. We are continuing to benefit from the early redemption of the 2025 issue of the 2014 refunding bond in the spring of 2020. We are seeing a few increases this year, general transportation aids are up, room tax revenues are up. Though we do keep a small percent of that, it's four percent of an eight percent tax. The recreation fee revenues are also anticipated to increase. And the TDS project continues to phase down, so there's both less revenues and less expenditures in Public Works. In terms of operational expenditures, there are larger increases for year two of the three-year police services contract mentioned previously. There are also increases for fire department operations, as well as increases for recreation, program temporary staff, and additional program activities. In terms of capital projects, we're investing nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in roadway construction, that's one-hundred-thousand-dollar increase over 2022. The County Highway M project is underway and will continue through 2025. The projected village cost through the life of the project is approximately four-point-seven million dollars. Utilizing our building maintenance sinking fund to update our building access control and door security, that cost to us is about twenty-four thousand to the general fund, the rest is funded by water and sewer. And for parks, we're continuing to work on Calavera Park Phase One and also installing signs at Whisper Ridge Park. For law enforcement, we replace a squad vehicle each year. For the fire department, we replace the hearing protection equipment in one vehicle per year, and will potentially replace portable radios and install security cameras at Station Two if we are able to obtain grant funding. In TID one, we have a sewer extension project planned along East Deerfield for Public Works. We are replacing a zero-turn mower and a bucket truck, and the equipment replacements will be funded with Equipment Replacement Reserve Funds. So here's a listing of planned 2023 road projects totaling nine-hundred-and-thirty thousand. Keep in mind that there are engineering, legal, and publishing costs as well. This next slide is a thirty-year projection of road reconstruction costs, which support the additional one-hundred-thousand dollars per year. In 2023, at nine-hundred-and-sixty thousand for roadwork, we're not quite where our Public Works Director would like to be at one-point-six million dollars. Looking ahead to 2024 to 2027, there are a number of projects on the horizon. This includes the County Highway M project currently underway, replacement of some larger Public Works equipment in 2024 and 2025, and replacement of two fire trucks, movement to electronic processing of payroll and accounts payable, a server upgrade in 2027. It's important to note that these are set as a guide, and they are subject to change. There are a number of future park projects planned as well, I'm not gonna read through the whole list, but you can see those here. In 2023, we continue to contribute to a number of sinking funds. Those are listed here. It is important to note that we are outside of the ten percent variance allowed on the assessed to equalize ratio, which is now at eighty-five-point-six percent for the 2022 tax roll.
And what that means is sometime within the next five or six years, we'll need to do a revaluation.
Moving on to the debt service fund, this chart highlights 2023 debt service payments and when those debts will be paid off. We do not anticipate any new levy-supported borrowing until 2025, and that would be for the Lineville Road Project. We have three open tax incremental districts. For two of those, we're still in the open expenditure period, starting with TID one. We're seeing an increase in TID increment of about one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars as a result of development agreements. We anticipate borrowing for the East Deerfield Sewer Extension. You see the bond proceeds here, and then you also see the capital outlay. There is also a small four-thousand-dollar outlay for Parkfield Court. Our projected ending fund balance for 2022 is three-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars. For 2023, we're projecting an ending fund balance of five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars. TID two. Expenditure period ended in mid-August 2021, we're in the midst of a TID two expenditure period audit. I'm hoping to have that before the board for the December fifth meeting. The debt service for Riverside Drive is scheduled to be paid off in 2026, however, there is the potential to pay that debt off early. Incremental revenues increased about twenty-four thousand dollars, and the ending fund balance in 2023 is projected at two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars. TID number four, there's a nice increase of one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars in incremental revenues, and this TID is expected to contribute to the County Highway M project in 2024, and also through the debt service for the 2025 borrowing. Moving on to proprietary funds, I'll start with garbage and recycling. We're proposing an annual fee increase of five dollars per household to one-hundred-and-ninety dollars per year. We'll continue to transfer eighty-five thousand dollars annually to road reconstruction. We do project a net loss of fifty-six thousand dollars at year end, however, that's primarily due to the transfer to road reconstruction. We are still expecting to have more than six months' operating expenses cash on hand by year end. For the stormwater fund, there's no fee increase this year. We are anticipating an unrestricted cash balance of greater than six months' operating expenses by the end of 2023. A statement was created for the pond cleaning sinking fund, and that was included in your packets. We do have a number of dredging projects scheduled from 2023 through 2027, and it's just helpful to track the changes in fund balance as we make contributions to and also withdrawals from the fund to pay for those dredging projects. So we anticipate an ending fund balance in 2023 of two-hundred-and-three thousand dollars. And this slide outlines the projected pond dredgings from 2023 through 2057. It's kind of small print. The estimated costs of those are on the slide as well. We have two park special revenue funds, the Calavera Park Fund and the Parkland Dedication Fund. The revenue sources are a tower lease and a park, and park impact fees of three-hundred dollars per REU. Planned investments for 2023 through 2027 include the Whisper Ridge Park signs, Calavera Park Phase One, and Calavera Park bleachers. The anticipated ending fund balance for each fund is noted here. Moving on to other special revenue funds, for the stadium tax fund, we've received just under six-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars to date. The funds have been used to support a number of projects that are noted here. We anticipate that the stadium fund will continue to support Calavera Park Phase One. After all these projects are completed, we still anticipate having a balance of thirty-eight thousand dollars at the end of 2023. For the wetland mitigation fund, construction has been delayed to 2023. As a result, we will be renewing the letters of credit for another year. Credit sales began in 2022 and will continue going forward. Credit sale revenues are currently funding the Long Term Care Escrow Fund and also reimbursing all parties for costs incurred to date. We anticipate ending 2022 with a negative fund balance of three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. We are projecting a positive fund balance of one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars at the end of 2023. So those were the highlights. I'm gonna circle back to what this means for the overall levy and taxes. The apportion levy as published for the hearing is up three-point-four-one percent to five-point-seven-two million. The mill rate is up two-point-four-six percent to three-point-eight-seven-five. That's about a nine-point-three-cent increase per thousand. Again, what does this mean for a property taxpayer in Swamaco? Well, the median assessed value in Swamaco is two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred dollars. The village impact on that median home is twenty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. We are increasing the garbage and recycling fee and also the engineering rates by five dollars each. There is no increase to the stormwater fee. After publication of the budget for the public hearing, our final assessed value came in at approximately two-point-seven million higher than was estimated. As a result, our mill rate dropped from three-point-eight-seven-five to three-point-eight-six-eight per thousand. We received other new information as well. So our general transportation aids number came in fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars higher than expected. We received an estimate of our increased hydrant rental fee as a result of the PSC Water Utility Rate Case in progress. That is expected to increase expenses thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. And that rate case will be presented at the next board meeting. We also received, and the board accepted at the last meeting, the EMS Flex Grant, which is levy-neutral. We updated the debt service to reflect the TID one transfer to debt service in 2025 for the early redemption of the 2014 bond. That lowers the tax levy in 2025. All of these things further reduce the mill rate to three-point-eight-five-eight, a two-point-oh-two percent increase. And as I mentioned earlier, there were additional requested changes and new information, some of which impacted the levy in 2023, and some of which do not. There are two items that impact the levy and mill rate. The first is a proposal to replace twenty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars of Public Works Assigned Contributions to Equipment Replacement Reserve with tax levy to keep the mill rate consistent at the published three-point-eight-seven-five-per-thousand rate. The second is information that is certified to us by Brown County, and that is the collection of a thousand-dollar fee for highways and bridges that's spread across all property taxpayers in the village. These two items combined would change the final portion tax levy to five million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Seven, let me say that again. Five million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, and the final mill rate increased to two-point-four-eight percent, though the mill rate would still round to three-point-eight-seven-five per thousand. You'll note that the levy stated in the resolution is one-thousand dollars less because our village apportion levy for levy limit and statement of taxes purposes excludes the thousand-dollar county special fee. And in the past, we have not received notice of that special fee until after a village levy has already been approved. With that, I will turn things back over to Administrator Caker and the board for further discussion or action. And at the end of the discussion, we're asking for a motion to approve or deny Resolution twenty-two-zero-two-five to approve the 2023 budget as presented, the 2024 through 2027 budget as a guide, and the fee schedule as attached. Thank you.
Thank you. So no real further discussion from my point, just wanna thank Jessica and our staff for the time and effort they spent on putting together this budget. Definitely wasn't easy with the inflationary constraints that we had in our levy limit discussions that I've had with all of you, so thank you to you all, and especially Jessica, spending a lot of time putting together not just the budget, but this presentation as well. So happy to answer any questions, department heads are here, minus Andy, to answer any questions that you may have.
It looks pretty good, but can we, why can't we keep the three-point-eight-five-four instead of bringing it back up again?
Well, Jessica, if you can bring that slideshow back up. So what we did was, we took, I think, twenty-four thousand-ish of that monies and put it back into the ERR contribution because that twenty-four thousand was used with our one-time Public Works Sinking Fund. So next year, if you don't use levy, you're not gonna have that pot of money to fill that twenty-four thousand, you'll have to levy for that next year. So you're just kicking the can down the road when you're gonna have to levy for that. You typically don't wanna use your one-time pots of monies for ongoing expenses.
What did we use it for?
What's that?
What did we use it for?
The twenty-four thousand, five-twenty-five. That was to go towards the Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund.
I think what she's asking, what were we initially gonna utilize that, those dollars for?
The Public Works Sinking Fund.
Yes.
Oh, to, to start the fund.
So the Public Works Sinking Fund is a relatively new thing. The reason why you have money in that is when we closed out the Engineering Fund in 2021, there was an excess amount of money in that fund when it was a proprietary fund. So now it's into the general fund. And just to try to cover some gaps, we used twenty-four thousand of that to go towards the ERR contribution instead of levy. Well, because our assessed values came in higher than we anticipated, and our general transportation aids came in higher than we anticipated, we had some more flexibility to use levy and keep the mill rate the same as what it was when we left the budget meeting day. So again, the, the point is to try to not use one-time monies on something you're gonna have to spend every single year from here on out.
How do I, how do I ask this? What can you use the Public Works Fund on that wouldn't be equipment?
That wouldn't be equipment? Well, you can, I'm not sure I understand the question, because you can use it for anything. It's just another sinking fund that's unassigned. So in theory, you could use it on anything if you wanted to. It just wouldn't be best practice financially to use it on anything that you intend on levy-supporting in the future. So if there was one-time capital project out there, say the Calavera Park Tennis Courts, that might be a more appropriate use of this one-time pot of money.
How is it different from the contingency?
How is it different? Well, the contingency is levy-funded. It's the same in the sense that you're flexible with that money, you can spend it on whatever you desire.
The contingency fund doesn't carry over from year to year either, it's just a budget line. Whereas all the assigned funds, the money is actually set aside specifically for all of these assigned purposes. And the board can reassign those funds to something else at any point, but contingency is just like an expense line.
So, so at the end of the year, that won't go to equipment reserve, it'll just carry over? But it, it just kind of is just like a contingency fund?
In a way, sure.
Okay.
So maybe Andy comes back and he says, hey, I need X type of equip. And instead of pulling from the ERR, you can pull from the Public Works Sinking Fund, because you've got, I think it's seventy-eight thousand, seventy-nine thousand currently. And every year, that will just stay in that fund until you use it.
How much do you wanna give to it each year?
Well, we're not adding to it.
Okay.
So that will continue to go down, I don't anticipate adding to that. The only reason why we have it is because we had excess money from the Engineering Fund, when we transferred that over from proprietary to general fund.
So we're gonna slowly dissolve that to nothing?
Yeah, once, when there are things for us that we go, oh, my gosh, I wanna do this project, where are we gonna get the money from? This will be an option, it doesn't even have to be Public Works-related.
So you wouldn't have had to replenish it?
So, correct. However, next year, you're gonna have to levy for something that you didn't this year.
So if the twenty-four thousand dollars was like a twenty-four thousand dollar it was left over from the Engineering Fund, we were using it to pay for an expense that we're gonna have next year as well. If we used it to pay for an expense that we'll have next year as well, it, it's a, it's a one-time fund, so what we're trying to do is levy for an expense that we have this year and that we'll have next year, rather than paying for that expense one time and one time only.
But we're literally levying for this. We're levying to have this.
No, I think those dollars came from when we dissolved the Engineering Fund.
So that, those monies, the reason why you have that revenue is because your engineer coded for it or charged for it. Let's say a developer needed engineering support from the village, that's where that revenue is coming from. And the balance in that Engineering Fund, when it was a proprietary fund, was at seventy-nine thousand, four-seventeen.
So we replenished it to put our levy back up at three-point-eight-seven-five, where it would be three-point-eight-five-four without it.
You're talking about levy, it's the tax rate, the mill rate.
Oh, okay.
Well, we're actually not, that was my only question, we're actually not putting it back in that fund, we're putting it back in the ERR, right?
We're putting, we're putting that additional twenty-four thousand and change that we benefited from having an increase in our assessed values into the ERR. And handing back the Band-Aid that was using sinking fund money to pay for that ERR contribution, which isn't best practice, but was something that at the time, we're just trying to patch together the budget and keep the mill rate as low as we could.
And now we've put it back into a sinking fund where eventually it'll just disappear as projects use up those funds.
As projects come up. In the back of my mind, I'm thinking about like the Calavera Park Tennis Courts, which have been neglected for a really long time, and there really isn't money out there somewhere else that we can use, but you could use something like a one-time sinking fund like that. There's absolutely no reason why you couldn't use that twenty-four thousand from that sinking fund for the the ERR contribution. I'm not saying you can't, but you're gonna have to levy for that next year. Or use twenty-four thousand again from that sinking fund. But at some time, that bill will be due, that you'll need to use levy.
Overall, I think it's a pretty good budget. I also don't agree with the ten dollars, the five-dollar increase on the burning permits, but that's pretty minor.
Are there other comments or questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two-two-zero-two-five to approve the 2023 budget as presented, the 2024 through 2027 budgets as a guide and the fee schedule as attached.
We have a motion from trustee Rodden to approve Resolution two-two-zero-two-five, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify.
I'll do a roll call.
And can I hold on for one second? Just procedurally, it is a budget hearing, did we technically open open the hearing for public input? I know there's nobody here, but do we wanna just ceremoniously?
Sure, let's step back.
I will make a motion to open the floor for public comment.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor in a second to open up the floor to public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, the floor is open for public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor to open and close public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And again, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22-025 to approve the 2023 budget as presented, the 2024 through 2027 budgets as a guide, and the fee schedule as attached.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Rodden to...
Second.
And a second by Trustee Andrews. This is a roll call, as I was reminded.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Trustee Ward. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries seven-zero. This evening's meeting is closed.
Thank you.
Yay!